Hi, my name is Richard Shear and this is the Montpelier City Forum where we're going to be discussing issues and candidates for the upcoming town hall meeting. And this is an important show because you're going to have important decisions and at the end I'll say please vote and at the beginning I'll say please vote. We need more civic engagement. To my immediate left is Ben Eastwood who is running in District 2.
Correct, yeah.
And Ben, what part of District 2 are you in?
I live up on Main Street, Emin's in Maine, 241 Main Street. So, you know, I'm up the hill, which is kind of, kind of an interesting perspective of the city. I overlook City Hall, I mean, the State House from my bedroom, which is kind of a neat view. So, um, yeah.
And you're halfway between, in a sense, that part of District 2 and the part that's the outers on Town Hill Road.
Right, yeah. You know, it's, it is sort of the end of the, the sort of suburban area within town here, the more heavy, heavily developed area. So, yeah, up, up the hill from me, we get into Town Hill and...
Murray Hill.
Murray Hill and those areas. So, you know, I have deer run through my backyard every day.
But you've also got, I believe you've got part of Berry Street on District 2.
Yeah, District 2 goes over to Berry Street. And, and, you know, it's an interesting walk. If you walk along College Street from, from my, you know, from my house and Jag over to College Street and then, you know, there's all these beautiful painted ladies and some really nice old houses and some, some wealth. And you get down the hill into Berry Street and, you know, you get into this very working class neighborhood that, that is a lot more closely built, smaller apartments in these buildings and just, you know, there's a, a feeling of walking into a whole different town almost.
What's the commonality in District 2? I'm sure you've done doors in all parts of, or starting to do doors in all parts of District 2.
Well, you know, I, I think, you know, I think everybody in District, I think everybody in Montpelier, there's a commonality within our city is that people like, like living here and, and really want to live here and really want to make Montpelier a good place for themselves and for their kids to live. And, you know, I think whether, you know, people are of a more professional working class or working class level, I think that's a real common, commonality. We like our schools, we like our kids, we want, we want to, we want to take care of our seniors and take care of each other. And, you know, I, I think that's been really a refreshing thing to, to talk to people and, and get that pretty, pretty much from door to door.
Now, you know enough about council to know that this is not just a Wednesday night gig.
Right.
And that it doesn't pay much at all.
Right.
It's, you're, you're in committee meetings, you're on organizations' boards. Why, why the time commitment? What, what caused you to want to run for city council?
Well, you know, I, part of this public service, you know, being, being a service to the, to the community. I've served on the Conservation Commission for the last several years and it's, that's been really interesting, kind of, you know, my personal interest with that is, was much more on a hands-on rivers and water quality and, and hands-on conservation. But we've really had an opportunity to develop, delve into zoning, into some of these other areas that has opened my eyes a lot more to the inner workings of the city. So I really wanted to expand what I've been doing in the Conservation Commission and take on some of the other issues in the city.
Were you following the master plan discussion that's been going on for years and finally seemed to come to a conclusion?
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting. I, I think, I have, I have been, you know, following it on the, on the back burner. You know, I, I feel like we, we had a really robust public discussion about the master plan and really drew people in to really give city council an idea of the direction people wanted to see the city. And, you know, it seems like that there's been some disconnect between how the city has worked and, and actually how the master plan has wanted, you know...
Can you elaborate on that? What's the disconnect in your mind?
Well, you know, I, I think there's been a lot more focus on development and on developers than on, than on some of the community issues, you know. And to expand beyond the, the master plan a little bit, I just, I think this is a general thing. I think that we have this, this, on the, on our face, we really want to get people engaged. One Taylor Street is a good example. I mean, this is another sort of ongoing process.
Decade-long process.
Right. Mary Hooper the other day said she, you know, she, you know, when she heard there was going to be actual groundbreaking on it, she's like, "I, I could've used that when I was mayor", you know? But, you know, it's a process where I feel that there was a lot of public engagement and then sort of what was going to happen, happened anyways. And, and I don't know that necessarily the plan that's been, was, you know, well, it still seems kind of up in the air because we, you know, when we lost Redstone, our developer partner. But, you know, there was, there was a lot of really interesting plans for Taylor Street to make that a, a public gathering space downtown, like maybe to get people to the river, you know, put some, make, put a park in there or bring the, the farm, the farmer's market, you know, onto there and provide a, a more permanent home for the farmer's market that, that would draw people downtown and provide this real nice centerpiece, you know, of the confluence of the North Branch, the Winuski River. And instead, we're kind of, you know, it's, it's going to be housing, which we do need, but is that the best use of that particular piece of property? You know, I, I am much more excited about seeing the French block finally getting renovated and, and, and housing in, in some of these other areas that, that we, you know...
Would you have preferred the farmer's market there on Saturdays to State Street?
Well, so, so I think the State Street is, is, idea is, is a really good idea. I like, I like bringing the farmer's market out. What I would like to see alongside of that would be to see Langdon Street open up onto more of like an art, arts and crafts market in conjunction with that and really get people walking and, and I think that would draw people into town, which is what we, you know, an area I would like to see us developing downtown by bringing people in and finding ways that we could encourage local small businesses and local artisans and local farmers to be able to come in and, and build a really strong vibrant local economy.
On Langdon Street, do you think that, as narrow as it is, do you think that you'd get emergency vehicles through there if, if you were using those streets for, for commerce?
Well, I, I think, you know, I think if you were careful, you, you could, you know. And, and you can get emergency, emergency vehicles on either end. It's only a block long. So you could, you know, unless, you know, so for medical emergencies and that sort of thing, I think it wouldn't be a huge issue. And, you know, you could plan carefully, you know, that was part of the discussion around even State Street, you know, because State Street's a main artery. And, you know, if, if we block off State Street, then, then, and something happens at the State House or down State Street, then we're really, you know, in a pickle potentially because of our emergency vehicles being trapped on the other side and stranded from, from, from downtown, that ended downtown.
How do you see, is Montpelier a city or a town?
Um, well, I think we're technically a city, but I really feel like it's a lot more of a small-town feeling to me. I mean, the only thing we're missing is Town Meeting Day, but I mean, we're, you know, under 8,000, we're around 8,000 people and, and, you know, that, that by anybody's standards, it barely qualifies as a city. But, you know, we do have a city form of government and we do have city services. So it's, you know, kind of the best of both worlds in certain ways. In some ways, it, it makes for some unique challenges, I think.
How would you, at, at this point, our downtown is kind of struggling business-wise.
Right.
It's not, you know, it's a town of, of small family businesses in a small town and it's got the small-town blues as other small towns across the country do. It has the internet on one side squeezing and basically, what would you do to try and revitalize our downtown?
Well, I think, you know, one of the keys is bringing people in and...
In from where?
From, 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 from outer-town and in from our neighborhoods. You know, we, we're, we're a small town, but it's easier to drive downtown from most of the outlying areas than it is to, to walk or bike or get there by public transit. So if you want to be a city, then I think we need to have, have that ability that, you know, to, to be able to have, you know, a, a, a less car-intensive way to do commerce within town. So I'd like to see, you know, an increase in our, in our public transportation. I'd like to see some better bike and walkability, you know, paths to bring, to connect our neighborhoods to our downtown, to our, to our parks, but also find ways to bring people in from outer-town. And this is where I think like featuring our farmer's market more as a prominent event and, and then even expanding that with, with something on Langdon Street, I think could really be a, a good way that, that could really bring a lot of people into town and, and bring a nice shot of, of, of money into, into our downtown businesses.
Has council been doing that in a way that you feel is adequate?
I, I think, I think, I think council's been doing a lot to help, to try to help downtown. You know, there's, there's a couple other issues with downtown that I think that's been, you know, there's a lot of empty, empty business fronts downtown, storefronts. And that can, you know, that, that can drag down the surrounding businesses. And I think, you know, they've talked about having some sort of empty storefront tax or, or fee. I don't know if we need to go there, but maybe have some sort of, you know, if we are going to supplement downtown, incentivize downtown, we need to, I think one of the things we need to do is incentivize getting those storefronts filled. So we have a vibrant downtown that doesn't look like it's, it's struggling. And then another thing, you know, but we also need to make sure that whatever incentives and subsidies we're giving to downtown is working for all of, all of Montpelier as well.
What does that mean?
Well, you know, if we look at like the distillery that went in and we've, we've given...
That's going in.
Well, that's going in, correct, yeah. That, that, well, the project's been improved, right? And, and, and I think we're at almost half a million dollars in between the different upgrades we're doing to the property, between the water main, our, 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 our part of the water main and sewer main, the, the railroad crossing and these other upgrades to that. And we haven't even, you know, we don't, we don't know how many jobs that place will actually create in Montpelier. We don't know if any of those jobs are going to, going to produce a living wage. So I would want to see, you know, being a little more diligent about that so that we, you know, if, if we're giving tax money, our tax money to a, a private project, to make sure that project really is going to pay back to the, the taxpayers of town.
And that's in District 2, of course.
That is in District 2, correct.
As is Saban's pasture.
Yeah.
What's your thought on Saban's, we're talking about long projects.
Right.
Like the Carlotta or the Taylor 1 project.
Yeah.
And we're talking about the Saban, do you think there'll be housing at Saban's pasture?
Well, you know, I, I think...
Because the infrastructure that's feeding into that distillery...
Right.
Will, in theory, feed into Saban's pasture.
Feed into Saban's pasture. You know, I, I do see room for some development down along, especially down a, a Long Berry Street down there. You know, the Pioneer Street Bridge is probably our best bridge in the city as far as capacity. And, so, you know, it, you know, and we, we already have some kind of commercial-type spaces down along in there. So I think having some dense commercial or mixed-use property in there would be a, a, a good use of that space along, along the road. But up the hill, we also have this, you know, really nice big untouched, you know, relatively untouched piece of land that the community really uses like a park, even though it's not a park and, and we don't have any control over it as a city. And I would love to see at least a segment of the top of that, of the top of Saban's pasture protected or, or in some way, whether it does become an actual park that the city might buy and, and turn into District 2's premier park. We don't have any parks to speak of in District 2. We have Harrison Field and the Turntable Park on, on, on Stone Cutters. And, you know, so there is no real municipal spot to bring families and kids together. We just go to Saban's to sled and walk our dogs by default. Let's actually quantify that in a way that's, that, that we bring that in as this community resource and protect that as a community resource and, and, and then, you know, allow development down at the bottom that, that would...
If we're talking about a park, we're obviously talking about increasing the city budget to purchase the park.
Right.
Do you feel that the city budget is correct-sized? We are the highest city budget, one of the highest in the entire state right now. At what point do you feel that that has an impact on, on school enrollment, on the ability of younger families to go into Montpelier, to buy in?
Well, you know, I, I think, I think that, that having parks will help draw people in. And I think that we offset that by, you know, developing more low-income housing like along Berry, like, like the Downstreet project along Berry Street where we have, you know, these, these apartment units going in. I think, you know, the writing is sort of on the wall for our, for our town, for our city, that, that working families aren't necessarily going to be able to afford, even at, at today's rates, a single-family house in town. But we can bring people in and, and, you know, into the downtown area. We can also do infilling to these, you know, to some of these large lot, old Victorian homes and, and still keep the character of the town, but have second apartments on there that could either be, you know, help seniors be able to afford to live there.
Well, that's part of rezoning that we were discussing a few minutes earlier.
Right, yeah. You know, and, 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 and these are some things that we really need to look at, you know. If, if we want to be serious about keeping the character of the town and also meeting our net zero and, and efficiency obligations, you know, we need, we need to look at a dense downtown that's walkable, that, that, that has a vibrant economy. And, and also, you know, I think we need to be looking at green spaces and, and there's so few actual green spaces in town that are really, you know, property values are high in Montpelier because people want to live here. And, and, and people want to live here because we have green spaces. So if we want to, you know, that's part of the, the, the character of the town.
Where would you create new green spaces, other than the park that you're envisioning in the high part of Saban's pasture?
Well, Saban's pasture, you know, has some potential. You know, there's, there's some stuff over in the back of District 1 that has some potential and even, you know, it'd be...
What would the back of District 1 be?
I can't think of the name of the neighborhood right now. It's...
You're not talking all the way out on Finch Road where, where Rosie lives?
No, well, well, you know, I, well, you know, there, there is some neat stuff, you know, up there, you know, they, what used to be called the Stump Dump Road.
That's Finch Road now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Where our councilwoman lives.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I, I think, to, to shift a little bit on that, you know, one of the things that I, I was really kind of excited about was this potential to put a solar, you know, a, a big solar project down there by the old stump dump. And, and, you know, again, it's not just protecting green spaces, but also, you know, I'm really a strong supporter of the net zero idea and be able to produce clean renewable energy in town that also gives us some resilience, you know, from when we have storms and, and, and this increased disruption to the infrastructure as a whole.
Net zero, the competition that awarded $10,000 to the, the winning design, how do you see that ever being implemented? Do you see that being implemented along with its, its tram to national life?
Well, I think some, I think some of that is aspirational and, and, and really to get people excited about the idea. I think the reality is that we do need to find ways to increase our efficiency and, and produce our own energy that doesn't rely on fossil fuels. And both from the aspect of global climate change, but also just from an economic aspect as fossil fuels are getting more expensive, electricity is going to get more expensive and these other, and, and so, you know, I, I think part of that was the aspirational of the city of, you know, Epcot City of the Future kind of thinking. And I think some of that was, you know, there's some really important ideas in there, you know, as far as...
What would be a good idea for the downtown that, that was embedded in that, that you could grab onto?
Um, well, I, I think...
Because it was principally the downtown they were talking about.
Right. Well, you know, I think one of the things, one of the big things downtown is this, is the, the sheer acreage of, of, of parking that, that, that takes up downtown right now. And, you know, and, and one of the things would be, I think, to just, to find a, a different parking solution for our city, part of that would be to be more walkable and more, you know, that was, I think, one of the best parts of the, of all those, of all the net zero plans was really to, to get people downtown in, in a way that didn't, wasn't bringing more cars downtown. And to, you know, we, we do have a confluence of two major highways that we do need to funnel traffic through town. But, you know, getting more people downtown and taking that property, that land that's now used as parking and turning that into some other way that's going to be productive for the city, whether it's housing or whether it's...
Do you think that would affect business downtown? Because you're talking about bringing people in from the outside.
Right.
A number of those people would be coming in by car.
Well, I, I think, I think we, we can look at other ways to bring people in. You know, we have this multimodal transit center that, that, that's going in. If we, if that's, so if that's coupled with a, a more robust public transportation downtown, if we have, you know, there's been the, the plan, the plan for the Vermont Rail that, that Dave Widdesdorf has been working on, where he's brought these, these commuter train cars and they could run on biodiesel. And so, you know, that could connect Burlington and Waterbury to, to, to town, to Montpelier downtown. You know, that would require some, some, some investment in the tracks, but it's, there are ways to bring people here that don't, that don't require bringing cars into the downtown. And, you know, we could also have more of a park-and-ride model where people could park and we'd have, you know, free parking and a shuttle that would bring people into downtown. There's ways to do that without requiring, you know, this...
Do you think tourists coming in from Boston would park in Waterbury and shuttle into Montpelier?
Well, I don't, I'm not talking about parking in Waterbury, but I, I think tourists that come into Boston, that come, that, that, you know, that come to Burlington or come to Waterbury or come to Stowe, you know, they might actually, you know, it would be worth their while to drive down and park in Waterbury and take the, take the scenic train into town, you know, and, and, and come in and have dinner and then, and then, and do some shopping.
While we're talking about cars, that's a logical point, jump-off point for infrastructure.
Right.
How is the city's infrastructure? How long you been in Montpelier?
I've been here almost seven years now.
How is the infrastructure now compared to seven years ago?
Well, you know, it, it, it's definitely cyclical, right? You know, I live up, I live up on the hill on Main Street and, and, you know, a couple of years ago, Main Street was looking nice and, and, you know, and now we're, we have potholes again. And I think one of the realities is that this is an ongoing cycle that we have to look at. One of my concerns with infrastructure is our water quality. And, you know, both, you know, from, you know, on the Conservation Commission, I was really active with the, the effort to protect Berlin Pond. But the reality is our water mains are another area that we, I believe in a lot of neighborhoods, we really need to, to upgrade our, our water system. So we have that same quality of water we're getting from the water treatment plant coming in. You know, we just had a water main breakdown by J Street this winter that, that left a lot of District 2 without water for a day. The Public Works guys did a great heroic job out there in sub-zero Arctic temperatures thawing that out and fixing that. But, you know, I, I think we need to really look at when we're, you know, when we're repaving, you know, and when we're tearing the streets up, to look at how, what other infrastructure we, we need to repair along that, along that same time.
Realizing that federal funding is not available for beneath the streets as it was, you know, in the past.
Right.
How do we afford to deal with our infrastructure under the street, infrastructure when the streets themselves are, are in lousy shape?
Well, I think we need to find a way to do both at the same time, but it's sort of like in your house, if your pipes freeze, you can't wait for a federal grant to fix your pipes, you have to fix them. And, and meanwhile, you know, our, our, you know, we, we have neighborhoods where, where we've had, you know, water main issues for years. You know, talking to some of the residents, they, you know, knocking on doors, that, you know, that, that have, that, that are just there. You know, the water quality from some of these pipes, you know, may, you know, may, you know, some of these, some of these water mains are like almost 80 years old, right?
Well, some of them are 100, actually.
Yeah, so, so, you know...
And the sewers as well.
And this, well, and this, so that's the other end is, is, you know, we need to make our sewers and our stormwater system. You know, right now, whenever we get a big storm, we're dumping, you know, contaminated waste into the Winuski River. And I think it's just a matter of being a good neighbor to do everything we can to protect the drinking water of folks downstream from us as well. And one of the really neat projects that they've been talking about is this new upgrade on the sewage treatment plant that could also produce electricity, a methane co-generator that basically, you know, poo power, right? That would, that would use the methane that's already bubbling off and contributing to, you know, the greenhouse gas and, and instead harnessing that and, and using that to generate electricity. And I think, you know, that, that could produce enough electricity both to run the plant and be able to either sell some off or be able to use it for other projects in town, you know, a better electric car grid or something like that where we could, you know, more charging stations, where we could market that, "Look, we have poo-powered cars in town", you know, ways, ways that you could, could generate some interest. And, and, you know, I, I think as, as, as America's smallest capital city, we have some...
And the only one without a McDonald's.
And the only one without a McDonald's. We have a way to, to actually leverage, I think, some, some innovative funding from the different organizations that are out there that, you know, give grants to communities for, you know, efficiency and, and greenhouse gas awareness, infrastructure improvement grants like that.
Ben, in March, city council will meet as they meet annually and they set their, their annual goals. And each council person comes up with those objectives that they'd like to see during the next year. What would Ben bring to the table? What would be two issues that you would want to see on that board for council to consider during the year as serious objectives?
Um, well, I, I think, you know, one of the, that we haven't talked about yet is I would like, I would like to see more of a public engagement and oversight of the police department in town here. We had this really tragic event at the high school and, and, and I have two kids that were in high school. And without trying to armchair quarterback what happened there, looking at, trying to find out what the policies that our police department has, I realized that there is no civilian oversight of the police department in Montpelier. There is no police board, there is no police committee. It's, you know, and...
Is that a solution, searching for a problem?
Well, no. Well, I, I think, I think, I think, I think it is a problem, I think it is a problem in that if we don't have a, 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 a public engagement with the police, that then, then we get the, we end up with, we have the potential to end up with a police department that's not necessarily responsive or to, to the way the community wants them to police. You know, the police are a member of our community, right? And, and so it's a difficult conversation.
But they're part of the fabric, they're essential part of the fabric.
Well, they're part of the fabric, but they live here, right? And, and they're our neighbors. And I really think that the chief is doing, is doing some really great first steps to trying to improve relations, the coffee with the cop program. And I'm not looking to like have an adversarial relationship with the police, but I want, you know, I, I think one of the things that we need to start doing is having difficult conversations in, in our community. You know, people say we shouldn't talk about politics or religion, but, but I think, you know, we, instead, we should teach people how to have a, a, a difficult conversation in, in, in a way that does not, in a, in a, in a calm and rational way, that, that builds partnership and builds a relationship. So, you know, I would love to see a, a, a committee that is formed of the city manager and the police chief and three members of this, of the public that are appointed by city council that would sit and meet and would both discuss and, and, you know, the, the police procedures and, and, and policies, but also serve as a way to be sort of a, an ombudsman for the public. So if there are issues with the police department, we can be sure that they're going to, they're going to be handled in a very transparent, open way. You know, in other communities in Vermont or, you know, that hasn't happened, you know. And we look at, looking back a couple of years, Roger Pion up in, up in Orleans County, you know, felt like he was being harassed by the sheriff's department and had no way to have those issues addressed and took it, took it out on a bunch of cop cars with a tractor. You know, that's not the kind of thing I want to see happen in Montpelier. I want, I want people to be confident that, that, that the police are responsive.
And you don't feel that you could call Tony or email Tony instead of meeting?
Well, I'm sure I could email Tony instead of meeting, but for example, with what happened at the, you know, at, at the school, you know, it's not always in his hands, right? You know, the, 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 the lack of transparency around that shooting is really, you know, from the Vermont State Police...
I was going to say, isn't that a state issue?
It is a state issue.
The Vermont troopers had control of that site.
Right, well, yeah.
Not Officer Philbrook.
Right, I, I do understand that, but, but also looking at just as a general, as a general, at the national picture of policing and in the state picture of policing, you know, if we look at the Vermont State Police, there have been, I think, you know, three police-involved shootings in the last two months. At least two of them involve people with mental, who are in mental health distress, you know, the one at the high school here and the one that just happened the other night down...
On 89.
On 89, where, you know, somebody's suicidal and, and then gets killed by the police. And, and, you know, so what I, what I would love to see is for us to be able to work in here in Montpelier and set up a, a, a program that, that can really lead the way and that the state police might look at as a model for ways that they can improve their public engagement. Because the shoot first and then cover up later model of policing does not really sit well with me. You know, I think we need more transparency and accountability, but, but we can do it in a way that's not adversarial, in a way that builds community and, and, and really builds a, a strong partnership.
I want to go back to the budget one more time.
Sure.
The recreation center on Berry Street has its problems.
Yeah, yeah.
Its old armory. What is an appropriate solution in your mind for a recreation center?
Well, so, you know, I...
Is it a modification of the current building? Is it an $8-million facility, as the play-and-swim people say? Where is it in your mind?
Well, yeah, what I would like to see is some way to actually build more of a multi-generational center. You know, the senior center is serving our community well right now, but we have a very, we have an aging population, we're going to have more seniors in our, in our community that are kind of, you know, so, opportunities that bring our kids and our seniors together. And, you know, I would love to see some sort of way that if we did build a large, you know, $8-million rec center, or something aspirational like that, that we find ways that we can make this a multi-generational type of thing. I think that could also provide some supplemental income for seniors who are going to be really hard-hit with these coming, you know, the increase in cost...
What would that do, if our tax bills were to go up to finance that? Do you think that that would have an impact on our population in town?
Well...
Is there a relationship between taxes and population?
Well, you know...
As some would say.
Well, if you look at, you know, some say that, but then you actually look at the reality, and you look at, like, you know, taxation versus population and where people are moving to, New Hampshire, and the cost of living in a state, you know, there was a study that was done recently that showed that the cost, by MIT, that showed the cost of living for a family of three in Vermont was around $51,000 a year. The same cost of living for the same family in New Hampshire with no taxes is $55,000 a year. So, taxation isn't the only expense that we have. The other thing is, if we bring a vibrant downtown in and we're bringing some density into town, that helps the master list, that brings in tax revenue. So, you know, it's a matter of looking at, is this an investment that's going to, that's going to help everybody in the community? And that is what I would really look at, is making sure that when we do take tax money that people have worked hard for, that we're investing it in a way that's going to pay back for them at some point as well. To, you know, it's going to take us all working together and chipping in together. And this goes back to, you know, the living wage issue. And I know it's a state issue, but, you know, I think if, when we give tax incentives to businesses, that we had, that is a condition, that they were going to pay a living wage, you know, people that make a living...
What do you consider a living wage?
Well, you know, I think right now, you know, the number that's going around is $15 an hour. And, you know, if you look at that, that gets people off of, off of public assistance, which lowers that tax burden there. It gets people off of, potentially gets them off of income sensitivity, depending on their household size, which then could improve the money coming into the master list. So, it could, you know, and it gives people some money to spend downtown at downtown businesses. You know, if you really look at the economy of it, people can't, if people are struggling to feed themselves, and if people are worried about their next meal and just being able to make their basic living, they're not going downtown and spending money at one of our restaurants downtown, or they're not going down to one of the boutique shops downtown, you know, they're going over to Berlin. So, if we need to help people in town be able to afford to live here and be able to afford to actually spend money here and down, and this is like the reality like on Berry Street that I'm seeing, is that people are, people are struggling right now. And that tax burden, that tax base, you know, as an investment, is going to go, is going to help these people be able to, you know, raise their standard of living up and be able to enjoy the same benefits of town that those of us that are currently struggling with food security and housing security can enjoy here in town.
Ben, this is the end of this discussion, and I think you really made some excellent points. And now, it's up to you, and it's up to you to get out and vote on Town Meeting. We're going to do every candidate for every office, we're going to have the city budget discussed, we're going to have the school budget discussed, we're going to have the bond issues discussed, so that at the end of this process, you should be able to give an informed opinion, but that informed opinion has to translate into a vote on Town Meeting Day. Get out and vote, make sure your family and friends get out and vote, and watch the other shows. Thank you for watching this one.